Allen's Heating and Cooling is your licensed to manna equipment dealer. Trust Allen's Heating and Cooling to install and service your heating and cooling unit. Allen services all brands and with the purchase of a new Amana offers a lifetime compressor warranty. Call Sean Clark or any of his friendly staff at Allen's Heating and Cooling. You're a manna dealer. A manna lasts and lasts and lasts.
What makes C-21 Durden Cornigay the number one realty group in the area? First off, we sell more homes and our team of agents works harder than any other realty brokerage. Buying or selling a home can be made easy with our professionals. So make the number one choice in your real estate agent. Century 21 Durden and Cornigay Realty. For more information, log on to c21dublin.com or call us at (272) 1535.
You can't go wrong if you vote for my friend Carolyn McHune.
I am the best choice for the Lawrence County Clerk of Superior Court.
Whatever Carolyn says her mind to do, she can do it.
I have the transferable experience. I have the knowledge.
She tells me she's going to do something and she follows through.
I am a community servant. I want to serve you all. You all are my constituents. You hire me so I'm going to do the best possible job for all of Lawrence County. Not one sector, but all of Lawrence County.
I would gladly endorse her for this position.
I am Carolyn McLendon McHune, your next Clerk of Superior Court of Lawrence County.
Welcome back to our 2020 debate forum. Our next race will be the candidates for county commissioner, District 3, and that'll be Mr. Jeff Davis and Mr. Gary Johnson. Each candidate again will have a two-minute opening statement and a two-minute closing statement. Each candidate will be given the opportunity to respond back and forth to questions and rebuttal. And again, I will decide when it's time to move on to the next topic. So with that, thank you, gentlemen, for attending this evening. And Mr. Davis, we'll start with you with a two-minute opening statement.
Good evening. First, I'd like to thank TV 35 for this event and Heath Taylor in the Chamber of Commerce for moderating. Thank you, Mr. Johnson, for being here and your service to our community. I'm grateful for a forum like this to share our vision for the county. Thank you to my friends, the square, and supporters in the audience. A special thank you to my wife, Jennifer, and my children for being here. Everything that I do is to try and make this county a better place for folks to be able to move here and raise their family. And it's been one of the greatest blessings I could ever have to raise a family here with you. So, special friend and mentor, Ken Peyton. What you've taught me the last few days and decades is irreplaceable. And last, my mother Judy is here and she spent her entire career as a social worker in Lawrence County with DFACS and community mental health. And I learned at a very early age without realizing it that she helped people. And I knew in some way that that's what we were supposed to do. So I'm proud of you. I love you. My name is Jeff Davis and I'm the incumbent District 3 Commissioner for Lawrence County. I've been honored to represent you these last four years. In that time, Lawrence County's experienced a period of prosperity that's really unequaled in our history in spite of all the recession and COVID. Property taxes have not been raised during my tenure. Our rainy day fund, our surplus fund, has been replenished to a level that our auditors recommended, which means not only will we weather this COVID storm, we will weather the next storm without having to raise property taxes. We have raised salaries for all our employees, namely our deputies. They were terribly low four years ago and now they're the highest average in this area. And I'm very proud of that. They're the ones that stand between us and harm. So we've achieved all these results without raising taxes by applying sound business practices to what we do. You have to balance your checkbook at home and we have to do that at the courthouse. So let's continue the excellent course that we're on. And to do that, I am asking for you to vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. Mr. Johnson, your opening statement.
Good afternoon to everyone. I would like to say thank to TV 35 and Heath and also to Jeff for this debate tonight. I don't really know too much about a debate, but I do know that I'm trying to represent District 3. I have served on city council for 28 years. And one thing you have, we didn't raise taxes all the while, the 28 years I was in there. We didn't raise no tax. One thing I can say about city council, we balance the book every year because it's state law. You have to balance the book. I think the city employees have good salaries and they know they got a good retirement plan. But I'm Gary Johnson. My wife and I, we have six children. I finished Tuskegee, Alabama, school. I learned something about this race. People that you call your friends, they get upset because you want to enter a political race. I have the right. I can run for a county commissioner, District 3. People have asked me to move my sign because they don't want me to see them. They don't want people to see my sign. Let's campaign. Best one win. That's what this election is all about. I liked Jeff. I didn't like the way he operated on the recreational authority. But Jeff is a good man. I knew his daddy. I just think that we need to get people involved and everyone have the right to run. These seats are made for the people. These seats belong to the people. When you ever get in a seat and you think it's yours, it's time for you to go. It's time for you to leave. All the 28 years I was in the city council, I knew that was not my seat. It belonged to the people. I had five challenges when I ran for city council because the seat belonged to the people. But when we get to the point that we stop speaking because Gary Johnson is running for a seat, something is wrong. That seat belonged to you. That's what's wrong with this country right now. Something is wrong. We can't even get along. Asking me to move my sign. If I put that down on city property, move your sign.
We'll be right back after a short break.
It's nothing personal. It's just business.
Hello?
That's how some people do things.
Right away.
To us, everything we do is personal because anyone can answer the call. It's who shows up that matters most. That's the quality of your independent agent and the company that stands behind them. Ask Currie Maffett Insurance in Dublin if auto owners make sense for you.
I made a campaign promise to raise our deputies' pay and bring morale up at the Lawrence County Search Department. With the help of the Lawrence County Commissioners, I've raised the deputies' pay from $34,000 a year to $38,000 for our starting road patrol deputy. I'm proud of this accomplishment. I've also added three additional deputies through our patrol unit to be able to patrol our communities. We've made more cars visible on our streets in our communities. I've also put five resource officers in our schools. We're the first school district in the state of Georgia to arm our teachers. We didn't take this lightly. Since this program's been implemented, the cooperation between the Lawrence County deputies and our teachers, there's been a bond built. And I feel like we have one of the safest school systems in the state of Georgia.
I'm Larry Dean and I approve this message.
Quality products and installation since 1985. That's Four Seasons.
Okay, the first question, I'll start with you, Mr. Davis, and you'll have two minutes to respond. What policy changes or improvements are necessary to grow employment in our county?
Well, we definitely can never stop recruiting industry. We have a great economic development authority and jobs change. Companies move. They move to different states. They move to different countries. They move online. They go away. The textile industry is no longer here. And when we lost the textile industry, that was thousands of jobs in one swoop. So we just can't ever let up. We also have to recruit for the jobs that are needed now in spite of everything. We need, we need people with CDLs. If you have a CDL, a commercial driver's license, you can pass a drug test, a clean history, we can hire you tomorrow. If you have, if you're a paramedic or an advanced EMT, we have a dire need of that because we're competing with Navisont. We're not competing with the surrounding counties. We're competing with Navisont. We're competing with Grady. We're competing with Houston County. So we need to attract new industry, but we also need to cultivate for the jobs that we have. And we're doing that as commissioners by having an EMT program in our high schools. When the child graduates, they can sit for their board, their EMT board. And then the City of Dublin firefighters, we're paying for them to get certified and get their advanced EMT and paramedic certification so they can then moonlight. We'd like to hire people full-time, but we have worked well with the city that way and they with us because Lawrence County's so big, we just can't, we can't ever have enough lifesavers, enough advanced EMTs and paramedics. So that's what I'd like to say.
Thank you. Mr. Johnson, what policy changes or investments do you feel are necessary to grow employment in our county?
Well, for one thing, I think the county and the city, both of them have been instrumental in the development authority. But to grow, we need to think of the new industries based on the education level that we have here. I know we have the heart of Georgia, but we need to think of things that we can do to improve the employment by recruiting the right type industries. Now, we got industries right now that, yes, open up one. I think this may be successful. But we need industries that suit the needs of the people in this community. Yes, you know, we're getting away from things like construction. We're getting away from bricklayers. You know, those people are older, they're dying out. We need to teach our kids some type of job skills in which they can use today. They can be their own boss. You know, I think about in the area of Sophton. When I first moved here to Georgia, all I heard was bricklaying. I don't know if we have any more bricklayers out there. And I know that's a good paying job, a very good paying job, and we need them. And we need to start doing vocational skills. And I think at Dublin High, they do have some classes in vocational, but I think that's one area we need to expand in. Everybody don't want to work in a factory. So we just need to do vocational jobs.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. I'll start with you on the next question, Mr. Johnson. And you guys are welcome to have any conversation about any one of these topics if you wish to. The next question would be, what one part of county government would receive more attention if you were elected?
Well, the one I think right now is management. Somewhere down the line, we have a county administrator, but after I read some of the articles, seemed like the commissioners are doing the administration. When I was at city council, the city manager was the administrators and we are the people that set the policy. But when the commissioners start setting policies, setting up computer programs, managing the budget, we got problems. That's not the commissioner's job. You got five commissioners. You can't make a decision unless all five of them should be there. You shouldn't pick one, this, this, and doing manage. That's not the job of a county commissioner. If he ain't not doing management, anything done with management and you got a county administrator, that county administrator need to go. He's not doing his job. We got county commissioners running the job. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Davis, you can respond or you can answer that question. What part of county government would receive more attention if you were reelected?
I think I'd have to go back to first responders, lifesavers, ambulances in rural parts of the county. Lawrence County's 818 square miles. It's bigger than Luxembourg. It doesn't have the Okefenokee Swamp in half of it. Every bit of it is inhabitable and inhabited. And it's 45 minutes from Cedar Grove to Chapel's Mill. And it's 45 minutes from Rockledge to Montrose. So we have to find a way to push more emergency services, more first responders. I tell people all the time, you know, you tell them you're running for county commissioner and a lot of times, and you like their support and they say, well, what does a county commissioner do? And four years ago, I had to think about that some, but I've learned the most important thing we do when someone dials 911, that telephone call, the person they're talking to, and everything that happens after that is our responsibility. We have an award-winning 911 center. We have a great sheriff's office. We have a great EMS department. We have a great fire department. We just need to do more of it. When people call 911, they're having the worst day of their life. And people deserve to feel safe. And I'm sure that that's always the best use of tax dollars. So I would augment emergency services.
Thank you. Mr. Davis, what do you see as the most pressing need for infrastructure or capital projects in the county?
Well, I hate to sound like a broken record. I can tell you the biggest need and then the most pressing. I'm going to start with the biggest need that could be the most transformative. If we could develop the megasite, the heart of Georgia megasite, we don't own it. Wayar Hauser Timber owns it. It's 2,000 acres on I-16 and 199. It's got rail on the back and it could have a Mercedes-Benz or a Toyota or a Kia plant or any automotive plant, 2,000 jobs. And it'd be a regional impact and the state recognizes it as such. It would benefit our brothers and sisters in Trutland County and especially in Wheeler County. But there's no utilities. There's no water or sewer or gas. And it's going to cost a phenomenal amount to do that. Now, the county could do some of that, but we're going to need some help from the state. So I think really the megasite is the biggest infrastructure project out there. And then I think you said the biggest or to do more of, and I hate to sound like a broken record, but more firehouses, more EMS stations, more cruisers, more deputies on the road.
Mr. Johnson, you can respond to the question or to Mr. Davis's remarks. The question was, what are the most pressing needs for infrastructure or capital projects in the county?
Well, I agree with Jeff, especially about the mega site because that was one issue we dealt with while we was on city council. We was trying to run the water and different utilities out there, but we didn't have the help from the money from other places to help bring the utilities out there. The state didn't bring us any help. So the city of Dublin can't do anything unless they're invited to go out there to help with that site. And it's not right for the citizens of Dublin to spend all their money going out there to the site with no help from no one else. So that's one area, he's right about that, that megasite, that could bring a lot of jobs here in Lawrence County. But one other thing I touched on is that Wi-Fi. You know, with this pandemic, a lot of places out in the county, and I know my daughter stay right outside the city limits, you ain't got no Wi-Fi service out there. Half-connected, on and off, and then you have children trying to connect to it. Some counties are applying for grants to get Wi-Fi for the whole county. And that's something that Lawrence County needs. This is a large county, like he said a few minutes ago. And I mean Jeff said a few minutes ago, large county. It gonna take years to build a Wi-Fi system, but we need, we need it in the county. This pandemic has shown everything what we need right here. Thank you.
We'll be right back after a short break.
My name is Marshall Floyd and I want to be Lawrence County's next sheriff. Our county has experienced some of the worst crimes in its recorded history. The FBI recently published that crimes have increased in Lawrence County and have become a major problem since 2017. Our own county seat has been listed the ninth most dangerous place to live in the entire state of Georgia. This is why I want to be your sheriff. When elected sheriff, I will work closely with all law enforcement agencies and community members. With this partnership, we will form a team to combat the drug dealers, gang-related crimes, and stop gang recruitment. Career criminals have terrorized our county for far too long. Our current sheriff only dances around these problems. It's time to end the games. It's time to get serious because Lawrence County, you deserve more. As your next sheriff, I will get the job done. Vote Marshall Floyd, Lawrence County Sheriff. I'm Marshall Floyd and I approve this message.
Hey, I'm Glenn Redster with Hometown Supply. Hometown Supply located in downtown Dublin is here for all of your home and hardware needs. We are committed to providing you with quality products and service on our full line of new and used appliance. We also offer service on most any brand of appliance on the market today. So if you need repairs on appliance, just give us a call here at Hometown Supply. Local delivery is available for merchandise sold. Anything that a customer needs, we take care of. Just remember, if you can't do business at Hometown Supply, you just can't do business.
Thank you for allowing me to serve you for the past 35 years. Hello, I'm Jackie Dalton, your Clerk of Superior Court in Lawrence County. I began my career in the clerk's office in 1985. I was appointed chief deputy clerk in 1996 and elected as clerk in 2009. Throughout the years, I have gained knowledge and experience in every department in this office. I have a proven track record. I have gained knowledge and experience through dedication to this office and the people I serve. And I ask you to please go to the polls, vote for, and reelect me as your Clerk of Superior Court. Thank you for your continued support. I'm Jackie Dalton and I approved this message.
I think it's pretty obvious that broadband is a huge need for our community and an infrastructure need here. So what would your plan be to address this issue?
Well, first thing, we got to get, we got to have some money. I know we don't have it right now, but we got to get some grant writers out to apply for these grants. And I know we got to match a grant. And I think the county has been saving money up. That's one thing I would say about the county. Sometimes they, I think they could spend a little more money in areas to help the citizen. And like I say, we need this broadband or Wi-Fi all over the county. And if you don't believe it, go out there yourself, go out in the community, next thing you know, your internet won't even connect. And we say we want to be like Bullock County and other counties. We got to do some things if we want to stay apart with them. It gonna cost money. We can't stay like we in the 50s and 60s. We got to start doing things to help the people in the county. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Mr. Davis, what would your plan be to address this broadband issue?
Yes, sir. I'm pretty passionate about broadband and Mr. Johnson's correct. We have a lot of existing assets and kudos to him and the city of Dublin for their fiber optic ring. I'd like to see us partner to get that to more places, even in the city, and go out from there. My business couldn't be here had the city not done that. So that was economic development and municipal spending at its finest. And thank you, Mr. Johnson, for your part in that. Out in the county, again, bigger than Luxembourg, I am in this business. It costs $15,000 per mile to run fiber optic cable. And if you have one house at the end of a four-mile dirt road, it's never going to be cost-effective without doing something like rural electrification or huge grants, federal grant. But wireless, 5G especially, is the answer. For our part at the county commission, we have the lowest tower permitting fee that I know of. And we do not look to keep people out. We want wireless carriers in here. It's $1,500. And I don't think in all my time on the commission, we've ever turned down a wireless tower. So wireless is the answer, not only out in the far reaches of the county, but we could augment the city of Dublin's fiber network with wireless. And he's right. The city has some great grant writers and we could, you know, we could do better in that department. But it's going to take grants. It's going to take aggressively going after grants. But it can be done. Wireless is getting faster and cheaper every day. And kids aren't in school now. If they don't have good, our kids are at home and we have good internet and it's still a struggle. But if a child doesn't have good internet, that's, that's just not right as a society.
Thank you. Mr. Davis, I'll start with you on the next question. Should any part of the county budget be shielded from cuts? And if so, which area would you shield?
Well, there are parts of the county budget that are shielded from cuts. And I know we have some attorneys in the, in the audience, Ms. Love, so you tell me if I'm wrong. Counties are subdivisions of the state of Georgia and the constitution says there are things that you must do. You must have a jail. You must have a courthouse. Those are just two things that you must do. You must have animal control. You must have a sheriff. You must have a sheriff's office. You must have a coroner and a coroner's office. So I hate to belabor the point, but really almost everything we do is shielded because of the constitution. So again, thank you voters for passing SPOSS. We can keep the millage rate down, but if you, if you ramp up the millage rate and all your taxpayers flee, state law says, see, city, or excuse me, school boards are capped at 20 mils. A school can't go over 20 mils unless there's dire circumstances and courts have to get involved. State law says if everybody leaves Lawrence County and Heath Taylor's the last man there and we have to set the millage rate to be 100 million mils to get the budget, you get the bill. So really, our services are already, can't be cut. So we have to, because of that, stay financially responsible.
Thank you. Mr. Johnson, is there any area that you feel if you could shield an area of the county budget that you would make certain would be shielded?
Jeff just told you a few minutes ago, you can't shield anything. You got to, these are constitutional office. I know I can't go out there and do anything differently. So that's nothing I could do. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll start with you on the next question, Mr. Johnson. Would citizens get more effective services at a better rate if functions of the county were accomplished by contracting with private providers?
In some areas, I agree that some private companies probably could do a better job. But we made a mistake with our animal control in this city. That was one area, you know, we consolidated animal control and that the worst area, I think we got. I think we got more complaints in the city because we couldn't ever find animal control people. One thing, we couldn't ever find them. I think like Jeff was saying a few minutes ago, trying to cover so many miles, at least when they was in the city of Dublin, we knew where they were. Sometime, like the recreation authority, it was consolidated. I think that was for the best. I think it was for the best. I'm kinda, you know, public work, that's one area I've been hearing a lot about sanitation and whatever. I'm not for, for that in the city of Dublin, no. I think you got private companies out in these little municipalities that are contracting to get their trash picked up. That's fine. If those municipalities cannot afford their own sanitation department. But the city of Dublin right now, I don't want to see us get in trouble like we did, like Beup County got into. Beup County, turning everything over to a little private company, and they have suffered. I don't want the citizens to suffer from going to, with a private deal with a private company, and the citizen get the low end of the state. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. We'll be right back after a short break.
This is former Governor Roy Barnes, and I'm asking you to vote for my friend Kendrick Mack as coroner of Lawrence County. I've known Kendrick since his uncle, Johnny B. Hall, worked for me in the governor's office. He's a great individual with business experience, and he has a great plan to help grieving families during times of tragedy and loss. So, on November 3rd, remember Kendrick Mack and keep him at the top of your list for coroner of Lawrence County.
Hi, I'm Anna Grace Myers from Myers Equipment and Supply, inviting you to come in today and see our full line of Gravely zero-turn mowers. For more than 100 years, Gravely mowers have been fueled by a constant drive to improve, built to mow the distance. Find your new Gravely mower at Myers Equipment and Supply, 301 North Jefferson in Dublin.
We're at Roach Farm and Garden, and hunting season is here. It's that time of year. Need to get your food plot going. Carry a full line of rack master by Pennington Seed. Wildlife mix, deer mix, peas, oats, soybeans, ironclay peas, and wheat. And for your dove hunters, Malo sunflowers and feed wheat. Even Kerry Mojo decoys. Full line of trophy feeders, gravity and spin feeders. And once you get them, you need to have something to put in them. With bulk corn, we got corn on the cob. Deer feed from ADM, Antler Extreme, and 4S Drawl. You will soon need something to cook all the game. We got grills, griddles, deep fryers, not to mention outdoor benches, chairs, and fire pits. Keep in mind, we got a full line of Carhartt clothes. Want to make your feet happy? Pick up a pair of boots. We got Rocky, Georgia Boot, and Twisted X. Need trail cameras or rechargeable batteries? We got SpyPoint, Wild Game Innovations, Plot Watcher, and Stealth Cam. Come check us out. No time to get your minerals out in the spring? You still got time. Roach Farm and Garden carry salt blocks, mineral blocks, trophy rock, vapple, and deer cane. Need a place to sit? We carry Millennium Lock-on deer stands and tower stands from Custom Outdoors. Don't forget to pick up some Voodoo deer lure. It puts a hex on them. Come see us at Roach Farm and Garden. Two locations, Dublin and Wrightsville.
Mr. Davis, would citizens get more effective services and a better rate if more functions of the county were accomplished by contracting with private providers?
Sometimes they would, and, and sometimes they wouldn't. It's a, it's a either-or. Trash is always an issue. There are always a lot of private haulers. Particular, you know, there's a debate, probation, private probation, or, or the sheriff running probation, and there's no hard and fast answer. We should be open, but I'm not for privatizing things that shouldn't be driven by profit motive. I, I wouldn't be for privatizing the sheriff's office, even though you can't do that, because you don't want to financially incentivize someone to lock more people up, to, you understand what I'm saying? But circumstances will dictate, and, and I pray for wisdom at the time to know whether it should or shouldn't be done. It should never be off the table, but there are certain things that don't make money that just a humane society does, and it doesn't make money, and it costs money, and it's the common good, and it just has to come from common revenues.
Thank you. Gentlemen, I'm gonna ask you one more question, and if you could, keep your answer maybe to one minute on this, and we need to wrap up. I'll start with you, Mr. Davis. If reelected, what is at the top of your to-do list?
The top of my to-do list will be to work with the new elected officials. That's always the first thing. We're, we have a lot of races being contested this year. It's not outside statistical possibility, there'll be some new faces. So, working with anybody, having good relationships with the city of Dublin, that's our county seat, and they've, they've got some good leadership there. You know, and, and Mr. Johnson has been there, and, and he's been good leadership, and there's, you know, there, there are always people you have to work with. So, I guess the thing I would want to do the most is just to, to work with our constitutional officers, my fellow commissioners, all our municipalities, and just be the best servant I can.
Thank you. Mr. Johnson, the top of your to-do list if you're elected?
Work with everyone, as Jeff just mentioned. Work with the entire county commissioner, work with the administrators, work with all the little, small municipalities, come more involved with the chamber. But my main goal is to serve the people. That's my main goal, is to serve the people. Thank you.
Thank you, sir, and you have two minutes now for your closing statement.
On November 3rd, I would like for you to vote for Gary Johnson as your county commissioner in District 3. The question is, Gary, you just left city council. Why are you running? I'm running because, number one, I want to serve people. I have the time. I have the time. I have the time. You know, I, I noticed one thing when you retire, you know, you get tired, you're sitting up there and looking at TV and all, so you got to have the time, and I do. I, I have that time to serve the people in District 3. I get around, I get along with people, but now, I'm, I'm gonna tell you one thing, I'm gonna stand my ground regardless of who you are. If you think I'm a pushover, you got another thought coming, because I'm, I'm gonna do what's right, but I'm not gonna let anyone walk over me. You can forget that. I'm gonna serve the people in District 3, and that's my main goal. And I want to tell the citizens, I'm willing to serve all districts, not just District 3. We in there for the whole commission, and that's the purpose of county commission, to serve the whole community, all of Lawrence County. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Mr. Davis, you're two minutes.
I won't need two minutes. Thank you all for being here. Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Let's continue the, the path of prosperity and responsible governance we're on. To do that, I'm asking for, and I need your vote. Please vote for Jeff Davis for District 3 county commissioner. Thank you, and God bless you, and good night.
Thank you both. Gentlemen, we'll be back after a short break.